Good evening and welcome to the January 14th, 2019 work session of Man City Council. Tonight we have one topic for discussion. Before we get to that topic, Dennis, I just want to convey to you on behalf of the council, our thanks to Public Works for doing such a fine job with clearing the snow this weekend. It was a challenging event. I was out there three times shoveling between yesterday morning, evening, and then this morning. I'm not happy about having shoveled three times, but our guys did a fantastic job. So, please express our thanks.
Yeah, I'll convey that to them.
Okay. Our topic for discussion this evening is our skate park, the one at Bora Park, an evaluation of current and alternative uses. At the table to lead this discussion, we have Sharon Disck from our Economic Development Division and Michelle Potter, our Director of Parks Recreation and Culture. Take it away.
Ah, good evening. In 2001, the city opened the skate park at Bora Park, and since then, the city has also built two skate spots located in Diamond Farms and Lakelands Park. These skate spots lack the number and variety of built features, but the locations meet primary requirements for skaters. Many users do not need a car to ride to the destination. The place is usually open dawn to dusk, and it's free. So, we have an alternative for the skate park in these skate spots, but it's not the full-blown facility. Now, our original skate park has aged, and we're at a point where we have to look at whether we want to reinvest or not. And Rockville made the decision to reinvest. Their total cost was in excess of $1.6 million, and it's slightly smaller than our skate park. So, tonight we'll evaluate the Bora Park facility and determine, or at least discuss, whether this is the highest and best use. So, is an existing skate park the best use of property at Gaithersburg's Bora Park? Now you know why Economic Development's looking at this. We took the perspective of a real estate evaluation. And if not a skate park, then what other uses? We look at city priorities and the location's physical characteristics. The process we used was to review the existing conditions, identify and score the alternatives, and then make a recommendation. So, the existing conditions: adjacent to the Activities Center, the water park, and miniature golf. It's immediately accessible to parking. It's off 355 with a high average daily traffic count. And there's flat topography. And here's a map that shows the location. That blue square is the skate park. And here's a close-up of that. The land area is over 12,000 square feet, and the full perimeter is enclosed with either fencing or wall, or there's sort of this attractive gatehouse on the front. That gatehouse is 712 square feet. There are no restrooms, and it's got a small picnic area adjacent to it. It's not completely enclosed. It's not climate-controlled, but it is an entrance structure. And the skate surfaces, these are all above-grade. They're wood frame and skate-like surfaces. They're not concrete, which tends to be the newer way of doing things. And there are a variety of features. Rather than list all those, we've just got a few photographs here that demonstrates that. The current park operates March through October, shorter hours during the school year, of course, since the typical customer would not be there. And the facility closes at sunset. We provide additional services that we don't provide at the skate spots. There's equipment rental, onsite supervision, programming. That includes lessons, party rentals, skate events. The 2018 season did have an effect on days of operating, so we were closed for a full 22 days. Weather affected 38 of 158 days. So, this is an open facility that is subject to weather. These are performance measures since 2010. In 2013, the entrance fee was waived. There had been a decline in attendance, as you can see in this second column, and a decision was made to make the facility free. That had a slight bump in attendance, which we would expect. Would have been nice to see a larger bump, but attendance has pretty much stabilized. The next column has expenditures. I thought about a graph, but I thought it's kind of better to see the trends. So, my favorite column to indicate the health of a facility, the net revenue. As you can see, we started out with a small negative revenue, and then we just kind of flattened out into negative revenue above $20,000 per year. What's interesting is the prorated cost per visit. So, in 2010, the park was subsidizing each visit, not each visitor, but each visit, $1.19, and by 2017, that was up to $8.01. So, this is a facility that is now subsidizing visits to a much larger degree than it was when the original decision to build a skate park was made. Now, another performance measure is who's actually using the skate park. And a significant number of visits are attributed to non-residents of the city. So, a little over a third are city residents. So, now we're looking at a facility that we subsidize at more than $8 per visit, and the majority of those visits are non-residents. So, attendance has not shown growth. It's nearly 40% less than in 2010. And if we were to average that subsidy over the last three years, because I don't want to pull one year and say, "Maybe that's an anomaly," we are easily well above $7 a visit. And here are trends with skateboarding in general. And that's not the only activity at the skate park, in-line and BMX bikes. But, you know, it's the basic function. So, the average age is 13 to 14 years. Industry-wide, most commonplace to ride a skateboard outside of a park is the driveway, and that probably has more to do with that's where people start. So, you have more people beginning the sport. They may drop off, but they start in their driveway. Since '27, there's been a drop in U.S. skateboarding sales, about 2% a year, and the percent of American youth who have ridden a skateboard in the last year is 8.6. So, this is not a sport in the majority, but it's under 10%.
Where do you guys get these statistics, from just published newspaper reports?
Yeah, industry publications. So, we have a location that's not easily accessible to that 13-, 14-year-old. It's not in a neighborhood. It's off 355. We have declining industry-wide trends in the U.S. Skateboarding is growing globally, but in the U.S., it's on the decline. The attendance at our own facility has been flat. We have a low percentage of residents who use the facility. We've got the outdated design and the magnitude of the subsidy we have. So, you can see why we're evaluating this skate park tonight. For alternatives, we established eight criteria: initial investment to convert the space if we choose to do something other than a skate park, the operating costs of whatever that function would be, whether it's appropriate for the location, whether there's a demand for it by customers, how many seasons will it operate, is there revenue potential, flexibility of the space, and then the target demographic. Are we targeting a large swath of city residents, or is it a very narrow number? And then, to identify the alternatives, we looked at recreational facilities and uses in adjacent counties. What's Howard County doing? What's Montgomery County? Fairfax? What are other cities doing? We did staff interviews, and we also used Esri Business Analyst. This is a subscription data service that the city has as part of their GIS services. And by looking at the spending data, lifestyle data, we were able to look at what is it people like to do with their time as far as recreation? Then, we came up with nine alternatives. We did not include alternatives that were very small. If nobody's participating in it, we're not going to throw that out as an opportunity. We can run through all of these, or if you want, this is interactive, and we can choose the alternatives you'd like to see. You want to let me know your preference, or I can just go straight through.
Oh, go straight through.
Let's go through them.
Okay.
I think we all have a favorite.
So, the first is a picnic or entertainment space, and we've got photographs that represent what that might look like. We have the defined boundaries. This would be available for rental. It's certainly something that's in demand, especially as housing units shrink. And we could furnish it with tables and seating. It could be distinctive from our picnic pavilions. And the advantages: we know we have a demand. Our picnic facilities are rented. It's compatible with the water park and miniature golf. It's flexible. Staff actually came up with various alternatives. You can program it for movie nights, host other city-sponsored Oktoberfest-type things. There's a large variety of events that could be programmed in a contained space of about this size. So, it's appropriate for the location and the site configuration. One of the big disadvantages is that it increases the demand for parking during the water park's operation. The water park is extremely popular. We think this use would probably be very popular, and juggling the parking resources would be your challenge. So, it sort of becomes a challenge of, can you succeed too much? And it does not directly encourage new physical activity, whereas the skate park is something that is great exercise. And then, across the bottom of the screen, I've put green check marks for those categories where this rated higher relative to the other items. So, you can see, while we've got an initial investment that's moderate, the operating costs are low. It's appropriate for the location. Customer demand is high. Could operate at three seasons. You can have heaters, whatever. Net revenue potential's moderate, but there is potential. And there's flexibility of the space. You can use it for different things. It's a wide demographic. Many people from many backgrounds would be interested in this use. The next one is...
So, there's no other improvements, other than basically bringing in outdoor furniture, right?
Well, we look...
You're removing the skate elements?
We'd have to remove that. We actually worked up a sample design and a budget. Since this was our top-rated recommendation, at the end of the report, we delve into that in a little greater detail. But, you know, you've got a paved area. You've got a fence. What do you do? Furnish it and make it pretty. Flex multi-use court would be a court where one surface, many sports, basketball, racquetballs, that kind of thing. When we looked at the Esri data, basketball and swimming were the two highest sports-type activities. We're not going to put a pool here. We have a water park, but a flex court could accommodate some of these sports. So, the advantage: it encourages physical activity. It's compatible with the water park. Targets a wide spectrum of users. It's a relatively easy conversion. It probably is a lower initial investment, so it gets a green check in that first box in the lower-left corner. Disadvantage: it's limited by space, configuration, and size. But this is a pretty big area, so you get a regulation-size court. The purpose duplicates existing facilities, so we're not really adding something new to the services we provide our residents. But you can see that the green checks don't have any red checks. You'll see those in some of the other categories. But, you know, low operating costs. It's appropriate for the location. There's customer demand. You can do it for three seasons, et cetera. So, a wide target demographic. It's not as flexible as, say, an entertainment space, because it becomes a sport court, but it's a pretty good use.
What's the closest programming like this to Bora Park? Is it the City Hall courts? Or...
Or the indoor.
There may be indoors.
The indoor gymnasium at the Activities Center.
Indoor's different than outdoor. I mean, something that would be accessible throughout the day, evenings, weekends, something like that.
Anyplace we have attendance.
Anyone who attends courts.
Yeah. But what's the closest to the...
City Hall.
Next, we have a dog park. It is a park for dogs. It's a little difficult to find pictures of dog parks that would fit an area that is currently paved and fenced. Some places do it. We have an advantage here where our dogs don't necessarily have to go to a place like that. So, it's a low initial investment. It's a four-season activity. It eliminates the possibility of programming other uses in the space. If it's a dog park, it's a dog park. Configuration, the size, the characteristics, I don't know. It's not compatible with the water park. So, here you start to see where the X's creep into the comparison. Sure, it's a low investment, low operating costs, but is it really appropriate for this location? I didn't deem it to be. Customer demand, I put that as low because people would take their dogs to better parks. It does operate in four seasons. There's not a revenue opportunity. There's no flexibility. Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, while you can't unleash your dog otherwise, there's a great amount of space to walk your dog in Bora Park.
57 acres.
Yeah, it's a beautiful place to walk your dog, so...
Beautiful place. It's not astral. You know, this would be astral. From the dog's perspective, this is not...
It's inferior to what's around it.
Yeah. Outdoor fitness center, and that's exercise equipment outside. There are communities that do this. It encourages physical activity. It's compatible with the Activities Center. It's flexible within a defined range of uses. You know, you could do classes and that kind of thing. It targets a moderately broad spectrum of users, but it eliminates the possibility of programming other uses in the space. It's affected by weather, and it duplicates existing facilities. I really felt like when I saw these pictures that they must have come from the desert or something. You know, you just look at our weather and go, "I don't know that this is a great use." So, we'd have moderate investment, low operating costs, location appropriate in that it's next door to the Activities Center. There's moderate customer demand. You could say it would operate in three seasons. Peak of summer might be difficult. There's no revenue potential. It's not flexible. So, this one is not rating as high as some of the others.
So, is this the same proposed use that we're doing for CPSC?
Correct. So, that would also be duplicate of services.
Yeah. Water park addition. And this was something that PW came up with. There is a wall, the rear wall of the skate park separates the skate park from the water park. The cheapest conversion of this space would be to simply remove that wall, remove the equipment in the skate park, furnish it lightly, and it becomes additional deck area. So, we've got compatible with the water park, potential to enhance amenities offered at the water park, depending upon how it's furnished. It does increase the deck area. You can't, once it becomes part of the water park, it's not going to be programmed as anything but the water park. Does not add to the variety of services we offer. The days of operation are tied to the water park. Water park capacity is an issue. So, you know, here again, we've got a few greens, a few reds. It's not an outstanding use, but it would increase the capacity of the deck area. Equipment rental facility. And we tried to look at uses that aren't just, let's say, services for the public. So, this would be storage of items available to the public for checkout. You want to rent a tent? This is where the stuff is stored. It's almost more like an administrative use for the space. So, it could target a broad spectrum of people. It could be compatible with the Activities Center. It expands recreational opportunities to off-site. You know, you could take, you could check out a tent and go use it elsewhere. You can't program the space for anything else. There's a high probability the space devolves into storage of cast-off items. And inventory ages, product development makes equipment obsolete. There are private sources to rent equipment if you want. So, here we've got, you know, the green checks, the red checks. This one's just not ranking real high up there either. Children's exploratory playground. This is with interactive features similar to Constitution Gardens. It encourages physical activity. It's compatible with the water park, three seasons. We know there's a demand for innovative play spaces, but it duplicates the purpose of existing facilities. Targets a limited age group. It's confined by space configuration and size, and you can't program the space for anything else. You'd have a high initial investment. Sure, it's location-appropriate, operating three seasons, but as far as revenue potential, no, it's not there. We'd say very low, but we could say as far as revenue, flexibility, these are nonexistent. And the target demographic is very narrow. It's children of a certain age group. Adventure sports facility: climbing walls, trampolines, ropes, that kind of thing. Parkour style or ninja course. It all sounds good. It encourages physical activity. It's compatible with the water park. You can do it for three seasons. Disadvantages: anticipates body usage. How many times in one day can you run a course? There's the risk of injury. You can't program the space in another way. It competes with privately-owned facilities. So, here we managed to get more reds and no green when we evaluate this one. Yeah, you know, it's a great idea. You can see why the private sector does it.
You're looking at the right type, because parkour and adventure sports are different things. If you're looking at rock climbing, you're thinking more active. The closest true parkour course is in Columbia. So, I think that it would be an area to look, because there's not a lot around here for that type of activity. Not talking rock climbing and leashing kids up to whatever that is.
We look at this as there are two things that are similar in a way that they both require high initial investment, have the spotty usage. So, it really becomes a question of how you design it as to which piece of that you're going to target, if that makes sense.
I would just say the market research for parkour might surprise you once you look at the demand for the local area, because there really isn't much around here.
And then, an accessible playground, play space catering to the needs of those with mobility challenges. And this would be wheelchair-accessible gym equipment. And this encourages physical activity and skills development. It's compatible with the Activities Center. It targets a growing segment of the population. These are actually facilities that are being installed in retirement communities. It eliminates the possibility of programming other uses in the space. We've got the size configuration. And it is similar to existing area facilities, not necessarily city-owned, but there are other facilities. So, here we have high initial investment. We've got a green check for the location and the operating seasons. There's really no revenue opportunity. There's no flexibility, and the target demographic is very narrow. And then, here we compare all these uses that we considered, and number nine is the skate park. We thought, "Well, let's throw in the skate park and see where that also ranks." And to me, this was almost like looking at the used car chart in a consumer report. We've got the checks and the X's. You see, the picnic space did well. The flex court did well. Even the water park addition. And then, things start to fall off. The skate park, because of the cost of renovation, that would have a high initial investment. We know that the customer demand is low, because we've seen that from the actual performance. The operating season is three seasons, so it gets that green check. The revenue potential is very low. We've been losing money. The flexibility is nonexistent, and the target demographic has been narrowing. So, the skate park in the scheme of things is not the highest and best use for this space. So, our recommendation was the picnic space. We described that as an area defined with boundaries. It's great for restricting attendance at rental events or city-sponsored events. And it's furnished with tables and seating. Overhead covering to protect from inclement weather. We looked at other entertainment spaces in the area, and no one is going to reserve their corporate event in a space that can't be sheltered from rain. That's just the reality of how rentals work. Our nearby picnic pavilions reserve quickly. Our rental rates tend to be higher than the other public facilities in the adjacent jurisdictions that we looked at for the picnic pavilions. We're obviously good at this. The site's located well for this purpose. All that traffic on 355 means this one's an easy place to get to.
So, all of our other picnic pavilions are also within a park, so there's grass and fields and playgrounds right next to them. This doesn't have it.
This would have the water park and miniature golf.
If that's part of the admission plan of using this facility, then do they automatically get into the water park as well?
We were looking at the possibility of, you can even come up with a rental schedule with add-ons.
Right now, we have a putt-and-pull pass, so we do try to market that, where people can go ahead and utilize the miniature golf and the water park and go back and forth in between. That's why we did that renovation two years ago, to be able to go back and forth in between. So, we're just exploring this concept tonight with you and looking...
I was just pointing out, you know, the comparison to our...
But you could do a package.
Picnic pavilions is distinct. I think they're attractive because they are in a park, surrounded by grass, near plain fields, near playgrounds, et cetera. So, this is surrounded by concrete.
We felt that this would have to be finished out and furnished in a way that distinguished it from the picnic pavilions. And here's an example of what could happen. The lower half of the space is adjacent to the gatehouse. That would be a covered area. This could be configured different ways. In this case, we just plopped in a caterer's large tent with the tables there. And then, the exposed area would have tables, umbrellas, hammocks, heaters, a fire pit, grills along the back. That way, it extends the season. We also looked at, you could put TVs on the back wall of the gatehouse. So, you could have viewing parties. Real large list of stuff that would be fun, community events.
So, it'd be a secured site, then?
Mm-hmm. That way, there can be alcohol sales. You could have, limited to people who've bought tickets. You could have small concerts. It meets that flexibility requirement, and that also broadens the target demographic of who the customers would be that use the property.
And if it had a covered space, it could be used year-round.
You know, we thought in the depths of winter, it would probably not be used. But you could definitely extend the seasons so that it would be, let's say, April through October.
Would you be looking to expand concessionaire services in the area?
It, this had all kinds of flexibility. It's the kind of thing where if it's not booked during the weekday, could you open it up for additional... It's the kind of thing where if it's not booked during the weekday, could you open it up for additional water park area? All that. How we would program it, how we would add additional services is all up for greater exploration.
Right, we do have the concessionaire at the water park. And then for the picnic pavilions, a lot of people just bring in their own caterer or hire someone to come in to do all the grilling and things like that, so.
It was interesting, when I was doing rental comps and looking at other facilities like this, many of the area caterers put Borah Park on their websites as their locations for parties. So there is a tight coordination already.
So would you be looking to have the site accessible to the public when not rented? Or is it only rental-only space, what you're envisioning?
Well, we were looking at also doing special events that we talked about a little earlier. So we could go ahead and program the space ourselves and then have it available. And I know that you had asked about doing things, you know, year-round. I had talked with staff that over the holidays, I was watching a Lifetime or a Hallmark movie. And everyone was sitting in their picnic chairs, and they were showing some Christmas movies. And people were eating popcorn and things like, drinking hot chocolate. And we could do things like that if there was an interest in doing some things in the winter.
No, but when it's not being, when it's not booked for special events or revenue generating events, is it going to just be open to the public? People will walk in and sit at a table?
We'd have to evaluate that, to see what type of furnishings there are in it.
Yeah, there's going to be a bunch of TVs and stuff in there. We want to, we probably don't want to just leave it open all the time.
Correct.
I mean, one of the spaces that might be of interest to you, I don't know if you've been down to the Pike and Rose and seen the beach. Very popular in the summer, obviously, but not necessarily in the winter. But it's a passive space that's accessible to the public. So it wouldn't be the type of programmed space. But kids come in. It's a, as far as I can tell, it's unique to the area.
They did have beach parties on one of the lists. Here's a-
Constitution Gardens has a nice sandy beach area.
So-
Accessible to the public.
This is a large space. It's actually half the size of the main facility, the main, basically hall in the activities center. Have we thought about extending the activities center into this space? I mean, we're talking about major construction, okay? But I know that our space is in pretty high demand. We have plenty of people that would use it. Is that an alternative that we should consider? You know, even if we don't do that at this point, at least that would be an alternative to consider in the future, basically enlarging the activities center, including more space like this. This would be another whole basketball court or whatever, you know, multi-sport court. It'd be undercover, it'd be available four seasons a year. It meets the demand in the area. Certainly, this kind of space kind of generates its own demand. So I haven't seen that idea here in terms of, you know, thinking about this and converting it basically into a building.
The direction I received was that someday in the future, this could be a building pad, but that that would be 10 years out. So we were to look at uses that did not require construction of an actual building.
Okay, so that is possibly on the table as well.
We'd have to evaluate the whole site, because that would cut off access to the miniature golf course. And then the water park storage is inside of the activities center, the freezer, refrigerator, and things like that that we'd have to look at them gaining access to that area.
I don't, those seem to be easily insur-
But it's just something to look at.
Easily surroundable challenges, including access to the, anyway.
We got a lot in our CIP at the moment. That could be, I mean, even if we decided, if we all decided not here because it's a work session, but if we all sort of went in that direction, that we wanted to extend the actual activities center, you're talking about a lot of years before we can fit that into, before we can fund that thing.
Well, but you'd also have to look at what you're installing now and the permanence and cost of it, because if we, our long-term vision is, as Mike is offering, we would have to figure out what's going to be removed in 10, 15, 20 years.
And I think that's one reason why picnic and entertainment space rises to the top. But if you want to look at something where, say, in seven years, you're actually going to be putting up a building, then the multi-sport court or the extension of the water park has the lowest initial investment. And those are decisions for you all.
So what are the, what's the county doing with their, you know, there's, I don't know how many skate parks the county has now, but I know there's-
They have Olney.
Olney, is that the only one?
It's a big concrete bowl.
Right. Is that the, I thought there were more than that. There's not one in Germantown or?
Well, so Sharon, were you done with this presentation?
There's one in Poolsville, but I think it's the town of Poolsville.
Let's get back on track. Go ahead, and we'll get to the questions after.
Oh, okay.
I thought she was done.
These are some of the activities that we thought the entertainment space could host. The private parties, sports viewing farm-to-table, Oktoberfest class reunions, movie night, food truck festivals, coffeehouse-style concerts, outdoor fitness classes, dances. So you can see, it can be used not just for catered private events. And the target customers would be city residents, corporations, families, clubs, community organizations, nonprofits, and then that partnership we have with the caterers and the events organizers. The cost to convert the space ranged from $180,000 to $260,000. We looked at estimated net income, $15,000 to $30,000 per year. It actually made sense to divide it into two spaces so that it could be used either by one entity or two. That could maximize rental income. And then additional income from add-on rental items. And that would be the amenities like TVs, games, hammocks, fire pit, and any additional income from city events. And that's-
All right. So since you were, do you have any more, Mike?
No, look, I don't have any problem with these ideas. I just think we need to think bigger. And even if it's long range, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, I can see the chart. It makes a lot of sense.
So-
Nothing else in specific. Certainly, I would rule out a number of the things that your chart rules out. That makes sense too. I think that analysis is pretty clear that we have two, I think we have a couple of choices here.
So, I mean, the pavilions are very popular. They've been popular for years. I remember when I was, when I first got elected to council, was sort of poring over different operational expenses versus revenues. And like, wow, the park pavilions, in terms of the cost we put into them, generate the most revenue in the city. Not to say we wanted all of our parks and rec programs to be the park pavilions, but clearly, they're very successful. And so that does make sense. And if this would be sort of an enhanced, an enhanced one, a slightly, you know, a rentable park or pavilion space that has some different characteristics from the others. Sure, I mean, I could, I can get behind that. At least in the short term, as Mike points out. Maybe long term, we'd think, we'd think bigger for it. I like the, I also like the idea of the flex court. So I wouldn't necessarily rule that. I'd be just, I'd probably be just as happy, because I can see that as being flexible enough for us to do a lot of these uses on as well. But, you know, I'm okay with these top two. And given the constraints of our CIP and the fact that we have these big expenditures coming up with the police station, with the other park, and with all the other stuff, I think, I think it makes sense to make that a strong consideration. Who wants, Neil?
Sure. So piggybacking on what you were saying about the CIP, I've been looking at the numbers lately and becoming concerned that we're being a little too ambitious in capital projects going forward. And I'm not sure that we can afford to keep doing as many major projects as we've been doing. So I think we, we need to be a little bit more constrained about what we do based on the resources available. And then looking at the customer demand column in your chart, you know, I think if there's an ongoing demand for picnic and picnic outdoor entertainment space that isn't, that we're not able to meet right now, and private sector is unlikely to create picnic spaces. We're not seeing them pop up in shopping malls or old office buildings. And the other ones' demand isn't as strong, and they're less appropriate. I think that's, you know, it seems like there's a reason why it's the first one on the list. So I'm comfortable with it, especially since the investment is not all that high, and it's likely to generate revenue as well as lots of usage. Seems to make sense.
Lori Anne?
I would agree. I like the idea of the picnic area, the outdoor. I think the picture you showed that had the actual picnic with the stringing lights, I think that's a great idea to do some programming in the summer. It reminds me of Bethesda Row, when you're walking under the little pavilion with all the shops. And so I think it would be a nice place where we could have either some entertainment, a movie night, or a community dinner. So there's just-
A wash party for a city council meeting?
A wash party for a city council for community meetings.
We'd get huge crowds.
I mean, the ideas are endless. And I mean, I think it's a different space, different than being on the grass. And, you know, now you can have a little beer garden and have an event. So I think there's a variety of uses that could happen. And I love the pictures for the dog park. So if those pictures cannot be implemented there, we have a dog park that needs some TLC. So those are great ideas, all good research. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, Rob? Yeah, so I guess decision point number one is, I don't see the skate park as being a best use for the site, or would I support renewing that use? Even though I used to skate way back in the day.
When Tony Hawk was cool.
When Tony Hawk was cool.
Apparently so.
Apparently so. You paint an appealing picture for the programming use of the space. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to duplicate simply park pavilions like we have at Elsrum Borah Park, where you just rent them and people come in. I think that the true use of this is a more valuable space. I think the true, true good use for it would be to have higher-end programming. You know, perhaps you invite Dawson's Market in to provide food and catering services while we have a band play or something like that. I don't know. Also, kind of like the, or interested in the idea of the water park addition, if it works, you know, if the numbers work, and if build-out of the space is warranted for the water park. Don't like the idea of the dog park, particularly if you're thinking about using synthetic turf. As Judd said, there's a lot of actual turf surrounding the area. If we, if we think there is a dark dog park need in the area, there's plenty of land to think of a space for an actual grass dog park for use. If Tony were here, he would, he would vouch for the fact that I've been bothering him for a warp wall for years and other parkour facilities in the city. You know, we've got the rock climbing wall at Robertson Park, which we haven't had the opportunity to go access yet, but perhaps somewhere else in the city. I think, just thinking it through, it's probably not the best site for that kind of facilities. Maybe CPSC or something like that. Okay.
Ryan? Let me just add also to this conversation that, I think it goes without saying, but we need to be thoughtful in the way that we manage the transition of this parcel away from being a skate park, if we are going to ultimately decide to do that, for those people who have used it and do love it as a facility. And as has been noted, demand for it is down. It's a lost leader. All of that is understandable. It's not the highest and best use of that corner. I think we all kind of acknowledge that. I wish that weren't the case, but the facts are the facts. I do think there are a number of people in the community, both in the city and outside the city, who love that facility. And so we just need to be careful in the way that we manage communications with folks in the community as we pursue this. But I think you all understand that already, and I just kind of wanted to say that so that we all remember that that's going to be important, because it's easy to say, all right, let's do something new and different and exciting with a parcel and sort of forget about the fact that this is going to hit some people kind of hard. That said, while I'm not super crazy excited by the handful of top-rated ideas, I do think they make sense. I'm sort of echoing, I think, the comments of the mayor and Neil and others that, you know, we need some solid ideas that won't break the bank, that will allow us to feel okay about transitioning to maybe a bigger, more expensive idea 10 years down the road without feeling like we're tearing up something that we put a lot of money into. And we need to be realistic about what the demand is out there for services. And if there's little demand for super interesting, innovative, exciting, expensive things, then we shouldn't be spending a lot of time and energy and money on those things. And we should, we should be gearing our projects towards what makes the most sense realistically. And I think you all have made a very good case for doing a nice picnic area or a flex court. So I'm on board with that.
Great. This is Tom. We'd like to hear from anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic. We ask, you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. State your name and address, or if you're not comfortable stating your address, your neighborhood. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak this evening? Going once, going twice. Anything from any other staff? I see Rachel here. We don't, we never hear from Rachel. I've just put her totally on the spot.
I guess there's too much soil to quite on the ground for the skaters to get here.
Well, I want to piggyback on what Ryan said about, you know, making sure that we reach out to the community and the affected people who may still use this area, who live in the city. Is there a way to maybe put a survey out on the website or on the Parks and Recs page for any ideas? Was outreach done to the community for this?
We have, what we have on users of the skate park that we can communicate with, Rachel does a constant contact newsletter electronically to them all of the time. But they were not surveyed prior to tonight's presentation. This was very analytical, done by economic development.
I thought that maybe they weighed in on the alternative types that you guys came up with, that list, or it was just-
Do they know that this was, this topic was going to be presented to the council?
Well, I mean, it was publicly advertised. But the question is whether we should have-
I know, we advertise everything.
Everything.
Communicated to this community at the skate park.
Yeah, I don't, no, it was not.
Okay, that's the answer.
And it's, we're not making any final decisions tonight anyway. But, and I also feel, I kind of see both sides of that, because you also don't want to say that, you know, for certain issues, we have to go out of our way beyond our normal public notice processes to notify a particular stakeholder group. But in some cases, it makes sense, so.
I didn't mean just to notify the users of the skate park. I mean, it's the community in general, because we're considering eliminating the skate park. So I would want to know who, everyone who uses Borah Park. What do they want to see there? What would they pay to see there? And if this new picnic facility would be, you know, welcoming addition or some variation of it, it would just be good to weigh in, so we get the best bang for our buck.
So with, you know, in terms of facilities for skaters, we had talked in the past about additional skate spots in other parts of the city. I don't know whether, you know, given our concerns about capital expenditures, that's certainly something that that has an impact. But, you know, that's certainly a lot less cost than-
Right, so-
It's a good investment.
It was about 10 years ago when we had the feasibility study. We had, if you recall, there was a group of residents that came forth and said that they would like us to address their needs at that time. And they were parents who said that they would like spontaneous recreation right after school. They're still at work. They don't have the means of transporting their children to Borah Park to skate, which is part of the issue. So we put together a big matrix, and we selected the top two locations, Lakeland's Park and Diamond Farms Park, to build the skate spots. Then we said that-
Then we said that depending on what happens with the skate park, there might be a possibility of taking some of those elements and putting those throughout other parks. So there are some skating opportunities in parks throughout the whole city. So that way, you wouldn't have to go through and build a whole new skate spot, per se. So there's, there's some options there.
Is spontaneous recreation a term of art in your industry? I like it.
That's the term that, 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 that those parents came to the podium.
Doesn't parkour fall under that role?
That's usually planned.
Well, it is good to see after all these years, the, especially, you know, Mike and I live very close to the Diamond Farms skate spot, and it's well-used. It continues to be well-used. It makes me very happy to see it.
Right, Rachel and I were talking earlier today that the youth do prefer concrete. And it is a very large investment, and Rockville's willing to make that, that big investment. And they're going to redo their skate park. And then we would be in competition with Rockville and Olney.
How was Rockville's...
Go ahead. I was going to ask about the revenue from their skate park. Some of the statistics.
Right, so when we went free in, I believe it was 2013 that was on the chart, we did that because the city of Rockville went free. So the youth were flocking to Rockville, so we made our skate park free as a result of the city of Rockville going free.
So they're still free?
It's still free there, so...
Correct.
What's their cost per visit that we calculated here?
They just, it is a new redesign.
Right, they have not built their new skate park yet. So their new city manager came from Florida where skating's still very, very trendy and was willing to go ahead and make that big capital investment going forward. So he wanted to build a big concrete skate park.
So with bowls and...
Mm-hmm, right.
And that's the $1.6 million facility, which includes the lighting and all.
I mean, it would be similar to the one at Olney.
$1.6 million, you said, to build the Rockville facility?
And that includes...
That will be free?
Lighting, stormwater management, the concrete features.
So we know the skaters will be going there.
Well, the skaters will have a place to go, I guess, that's what we know. Just like our skate spots, I think. So, but I think, you know, the fact that if we can make some of this stuff available, look at those possibilities.
I understand parkour is, is pretty well-received in Florida, so maybe I need to go talk to the Rockville city manager, convince him to spend some money.
You could move to Rockville.
All right, all right. Now it's getting punchy around here. Okay, well, the question I ask at, at the end of every work session, do you feel guided?
Took a lot of notes. We'll have follow-up discussions.
Okay. All right, cool.
But it's going to be time to go ahead and, we're in the development of our budget now. Like you said, there's a lot of projects in the pipeline, so need to get together with Dennis and DPW and talk about the next steps and timing on everything. So we may, we may be in operation this season for the skate park as we transition.
Okay.
Okay, so that was going to be my last question, and that we didn't talk about yet, is in terms of timing, how soon might this happen if we reach approval and have it in our budget? Chances are good that the skate park is going to be around this season at least, and that whatever changes we decide to make probably wouldn't happen for another season.
Right, well, the fiscal year begins in July, so it depends how much money we budget and the timing and the workload and capacity of all the staff. So it could be the skate park transitions through the season.
Okay, great.
And I do want to thank Rachel for all of her work that she's done over the years. She's, you know, done her best to market and to operate the skate park in a most fiscally responsible manner and do everything that she can that is trending with the skate lessons and birthday parties and whatever she could do to, you know, to bring in revenue in that area. And I thought that Sharon did a great job, very analytical and very fact-based research.
Yeah. Thank you all. So I wanted to remind everyone that this Monday coming up, a week from today, is the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Many of us will be volunteering our time at Santa Monica Community Church on First Field. If you're interested, please take a look at our website for activities. And if you're interested in volunteering elsewhere in the county, just Google it because there's activities throughout the county on Monday. And the next regular meeting of the mayor and city council will be next Tuesday, the 22nd. So until next time, let's do great things, skatersburg. We are adjourned.